Aloha, ahi, ahi. Can everybody hear now in the back?
Yes.
First of all, I'm Mike Buck from AM 690 K, Tenor Radio, and I hear from a lot of neighborhoods, and I pay attention, but I consistently pay attention to this neighborhood because it's my neighborhood. And so whenever I'm given the opportunity to meet a bunch of neighbors and do something we hope is constructive, I leap at the chance. So when Rec Ward spoke about this night, for a number of reasons, I could see a lot of familiar faces in there. First of all, I want to talk for one moment about the Huaikai canoe club. If you know how to rig a canoe, and I learned how, and Robin Bond over here, he knew how, when you're like 13, it's hard to rig a canoe, because you pull that cord and your hands get blistered and it's very sore. And when you cut the EU line of these canoes, you raise a lot of vigilantes, and we're glad that that didn't happen with this, but we're also glad that it made us come together. And that's why I'm here tonight to facilitate a little get-together here, to talk about some of the main concerns we have. But you may also have some concerns that are not on our list, so at any time during the proceedings, feel free to raise that. When we get to a question and answer period, we're going to have a roving mic, but we also have one up here, so when it's your turn, if you want to, you know, say something, you're going to come up on the microphone and say it. So to get the ball rolling, last 73 terms, Gene Ward has been elected to the House of Representatives here in Hawaii Kai, and he is the whip on this meeting, but wants to say thanks to a lot of other stakeholders as well. Rep. Gene Ward.
The first is to say thank you to Mike Buck, Hawaii Kai's own, Mike Buck. Let's have a round of applause. The dean of...I know, I'm a very soft-spoken person. Being that his was a weak microphone, I thought mine might be the same. But who would have imagined we would come to Hawaii Kai for a town hall meeting to talk about fires, to talk about vandalism? I mean, a lot of you I can see came to our Great Lawn Town Hall Meeting. How many guys came to the Great Lawn Hawaii Kai Meet? There were 400 people at that one. How about Noah, when Noah wanted to take over Mauna Loa Bay? Another huge number of people that were there. But to talk about fires and vandalism, that means there are some behaviors going on in this community that you, I, and everyone find totally unacceptable. And tonight, we're going to do an exchange. This is a doubleheader. Last night was kind of a teach-in. Senator Chang and Representative Thielin, Trevor Ozawa, and myself had co-sponsored that. Senator Chang, I understand, is not going to be able to make it tonight, but Trevor Ozawa may be a bit late, but on their behalf, welcome to all of you for coming to see something that is now not a teach-in, but an exchange between what the authorities have seen and are doing, or will be doing, and what you've seen and what you think you should know about how we should proceed to the future. We also have a wildfire expert, Pablo, who's going to give you some of the tips about what fires can do and what they can't do if we're alert to those possibilities. So this is a discussion. As Mike indicated earlier, we have a microphone here. We can either pass it around, or you can come up and speak. Which do you prefer? We'll see what the discussion is and if it's worthwhile. But what we're going to do, we're going to start with a fire, and we're going to try to get as much information to you as possible about that. I'm going to start with Mike, I think probably with HPD, but otherwise, thank you all for being here. Remember, this is a discussion to where, at the end of it, we can decide where we go from here, and I want to take a before-and-after survey. How many of you are now on nextdoor.com? Nextdoor.com, okay, I see about 35%. Nextdoor.com is the neighborhood watch, which is online for you to keep communication between yourselves about what's going on in your neighborhood. Nextdoor.com, we will come back and visit that again. Otherwise, back to you, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. You know, sometimes you hear about first responders, and our guest tonight has that opportunity of being there all the time and supposed to know all the answers. So we asked him to come up here tonight, because all of us have been concerned about this rash of fires. Fire is a very scary thing. You're going to learn about what a brush fire and what a forest fire is, but on this latest rash of apparently deliberately set fires, please welcome to the table up here, you can hand the microphone, from the Honolulu Fire Department Captain David Jenkins.
Thank you for having me here, and as Mike just said, Captain Jenkins, Public Information Officer with the Honolulu Fire Department, here to speak a little bit on the wildland fires in the Hawaii Kai area in general, and then specifically with the Kamila Nui Valley area, and especially the purposely set ones, or at least the ones that have been determined as to be purposely set. Now, just some statistics, just for the area of Hawaii Kai, there's been approximately 22 brush fires in the area. Now, this is coming from, all the way from Makapu Lighthouse area, all the way over to where we are here. Most of them are in the Kamila Nui Valley area, approximately 15 of those is in the Kamila Nui Valley area. There were two particularly large brush fires this year, the one earlier on Cocoa Crater, which was about 60 acres, the one that affected the stables, and it went on for about almost two days, 48 hours, with the response, though it was still smoldering for days afterwards as well. The other large one was the one here in Kamila Nui. Initially, it was reported at 20 acres. After final review with a flyover with a helicopter and our GPS calculations, it actually turned out to be more like 100 acres. Between the whole sum of all the brush fires, well, with the sum total within Kamila Nui, the large one being 100, it was about 102 acres total for Kamila Nui. So all the other ones were relatively very small, from a 10-foot-by-10-foot patch of mulch or grass, all the way up to the largest one. We have other means of measuring it as well, is how many companies were responding to the different fires, from the different sizes of about one fire truck show up and put out the small fire within a few minutes, to six fire companies with dozens of firefighters working to put out the fire all the way through the next day. Some of the impacts as far as these fires. Now, there has been no reported damages to property, structures, utilities, any kind of thing like that. However, there are other forms of impact as well. When firefighters are responding to these fires, unfortunately, we can't be at two places at once. So there's also the duration where we're at that fire, that we're unable to respond to other emergencies. Though the department has multi-layered response coverage, where other companies come down, and we're still having an effective response, where we're still able to meet within our standards of being able to get to other emergencies in time. However, there's a limit to our resources. The two larger ones not necessarily taxed it to the extreme, the largest one being the fire on Cocoa Crater, where there were... where there were 23 units and 67 personnel, there was utilized at the height of that fire. With this large one over here, Kamila Nui was with six companies with about 24 personnel. So as you look at the different scopes, there's different ways of measuring it, from how much acreage is burned, to how much firefighters are utilized, and how long they're on scene fighting the fire, besides any dollar value to the whatever was burned. So there's always an impact, and there's always a potential of having more damage. So fortunately for the majority of these fires, in fact, to the best of my knowledge, there was no damage to property directly, though, as you guys can attest, it did impact the community greatly, where it disrupted businesses, it disrupted your lives, it brought a lot of anxiety to the community. So though, it shows right here that your guys' attendance, how important it is to you. Prevention and preparedness is the most important thing on how to deal with these fires. Eventually, well, not necessarily eventually, the potential for a fire to start is always there. Honolulu Fire Department responds to over 30,000 fires a year. Over the past five years, we responded to about 50,000 brush fires, and it goes from any part of the island, and it's not just a summertime brush fire season, though it is a higher occurrence. We respond to Kohuku, to San Island, Hawaii Kai, all the way down to Kaena Point. We've responded to brush fires everywhere, even the areas where you think may have been lush. Beautiful Kaileua, Kaneohe, other areas have brush fires as well. So we, as a community, always need to be vigilant, we always need to be protective of our own kuliana, our own property, make sure that what we have is resistant and resilient if there is a wildland fire in an area. Wildland fires not necessarily needs to go up to your property line to pose a threat. It can transmit embers, where they can land on your property and take hold and start small fires on things within your property as well. Later on, Pablo, he's our wild man, uh, wild man, excuse me, wildland fire expert, and he has some pointers. I also have some tips as well that I can provide, as far as keeping yourself safe. One of the most important things too is prevention. A lot of fires are man-started, either by accident or intentional. We always ask people in the community to be ever vigilant, and always report anything suspicious that they see that may have happened before, during, or after a fire, and that's very important as well.
What do we know about this fire?
So, the big one. So specifically, for Kamila Nui Valley, we have approximately 15 fires that occurred. The big one, which was on the 17th, I believe, am I correct with that? I see my head's not...thank you. That was 100 acres. We had six fire companies that spent the majority of the time on that fire, for about 22, almost 24 hours, round the clock, working on that fire. The cause was listed as undetermined from our fire investigators. Now, categorizing of undetermined on any kind of fire investigation is what the firefighter or the fire investigators are saying, that there's not enough information to specifically determine a cause of the fire, or there's not enough information to exclude several other causes of the fire. It doesn't mean that the investigation is closed permanently, but if there's any introduction of new information, whether there are witnesses or other testimony, that can say that I saw this occur at this time, which caused the fire, or I saw these persons in this vicinity at this time, in ways that we can speak to the people, interview them, get more information, and come to a determination. The forensic investigation of a large-scale fire, like a brush fire, is very difficult. If you can imagine acres of fire, and being able to get out there and find a specific ignition point, for example, if you're looking for a piece of cigarette butt, or another kind of remnant of fireworks, or other potential ignition sources, and then determining if that was indeed the cause of it. So the forensic investigation, not impossible, but extremely difficult for these large-scale fires. So when the fire department has a determination for a wildland fire, it's usually due to interview with witnesses who can attest, yes, this is what I saw, I saw this person do this action, which was the result of this fire. And that helps out greatly with the investigation.
Yeah, I have a question. I just want to make a statement. Basically, I appreciate everyone being here tonight, but I just want to make a statement. I know we live by laws, but I don't want my neighborhood turned down because of political threat. You understand what I'm saying? I don't want us not to react to a situation that shows us so many ways that could be a problem, that could be the problem, and then avoid it just because of political correctness. I don't want us to wind up saying, I wish we had done that after it's been done. I don't.
Okay, now that's okay. Okay. What we have is the captain just said, the listeners have new information. We have some new information, and it comes from the landlord, who has an asset. But Mike, you want to just...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, you want to know when there's a fire, any kind of a problem up there. Who's up there, is it? I think I can... The up there is a long plan and slowly being developed. Turn this one off. So there was an owner, and there is an owner, and there is somebody that has been for a long time, proposed developing that part of the ina up there as a cemetery. We want to get the speaker for the proposed cemetery to come up and say a few words about this fire, and about the peril that it could have been, had it not been for all of that stuff burning.
First, let me start with some thank yous. Thank you, Representative Ward, for inviting me, and also to the program last night. Senator Chang also was involved in that, and Trevor Ozawa, the council member. But mostly tonight, I would like to thank the Honolulu Fire Department and Honolulu Police Department. Honolulu Fire Department has been wonderful coming up and putting out these fires, which have been deliberately set, and there has been a lot of evidence that has been deliberately set, even before the last fire. When you have fires starting in two and three different locations at the same time, that doesn't sound spontaneous, and it's not spontaneous. And so the efforts by the Honolulu Fire Department on each occasion to come up to Kamila Nui Valley is very much appreciated, and the job you folks do is very much appreciated. With regard, when the indications of arson came up, also kudos go to the Honolulu Police Department, who took this effort seriously, and without describing everything you folks do or don't do up there. They had a plan of action to try and capture the arsonist, and last night, I think the description was, we had a little bit of luck, but I think mostly it was a lot of work. And to the Honolulu Police Department, again, our gratitude for all that you did in capturing this individual. I have made inquiries, as probably some of you have done, as to who this individual is, and right now, I don't know that the Honolulu Police Department is sharing information, but the Honolulu Prosecutor is not. And so that, they said that during the course of their investigation, they will make certain announcements once their investigation proceeds to certain points. So I'm interested in finding out who it is. Our suspicion it is, is it's from the community, unfortunately, but we don't really know that. We, throughout the years, have had different issues with regard to access to our property. We have put up gates there. At one of the community association meetings, my memory is it was Mariners Cove, they asked us to keep the gates unlocked, because they had a lot of people hiking up there, and we have never had any issues with any of the hikers or people who've gone up there, and so we accommodated that request. Unfortunately, for the people who live in the vicinity of the gate off Kamila, other people noticed that the gates were unlocked and started using it as a garbage dump. So they rightfully complained to us, we had to expend money and effort to clean up the garbage, and after a number of attempts of doing that, we decided that we had to lock the gate. And since we locked the gate, the garbage issue seemed to diminish, but then again, the access was curtailed. And we gave the keys to the gate to the Honolulu Fire Department, but then there came an issue as to whether or not Kamehameha Schools or us really owned the access to the gate. And so Kamehameha Schools then put their lock on the gate, and apparently, they did not give a key to the fire department, so the fire department, on some of those occasions, when they had to put out the fires, had to break the chain. So at last night's meetings, I did have a chance to get together with a Kamehameha Schools representative, and we agreed to meet and try to decide what we can do to mitigate together the fire problem that exists, a potential fire problem that exists, Maoka, the farm lots in Kamila Nui Valley. And so we have committed to do that. Right now, the gate is unlocked, but it's going to be shortly locked again. The last fire outbreak, and last night was the first time I heard it was around 100 acres. Approximately 10 to 15 of those acres were our property, and a lot of the acreage belonged to Kamehameha Schools, and some of the acreage involved a utility easement. I don't know if you see that from your vantage point, but up the left-hand side of Kamila Nui Valley, as you're looking, Maoka, there's telephone poles and everything that go over the mountain, and there's a utility easement there. Thank goodness, none of the poles burned, and none of that service was disrupted. But a significant amount of acreage was burned, but again, we're grateful the Fire Department did such a good job in curtailing that.
Let me ask a question, though. Being that your property probably being in the upper area where the cemetery and the fires take place, are you taking any measures, preventive measures, or ways to mitigate, or otherwise be prepared for what, as you've seen, is not actually a random, but almost a pattern?
You know, when you have an arsonist, a random arsonist, it's really hard to take measures, except locking your property and trying to block it off. As I said, we do fly drones over there periodically to check, to see if there's any homeless sites or things. Recently, we mitigated the area right where Kamila first stubs out. When you go into Kamila Nui Road, we cleared a pretty large area of brush there, and one of the things that we want to discuss with Kamehameha School is if we can develop a continual maintenance program, because our foremost concern is not really the upper regions of our property, it's the houses on the Makai section of our property that we want to give our initial focus to. Once we do construct the cemetery, I mean, it'll be a natural mitigation of the fire problem, because it will be grassed, it will be irrigated, there will be retaining ponds, and there will be roadways. So once the project does get off the ground and get built, then a lot of the fire problem or potential fire problems will be mitigated.
Bill, if it's okay, and Mike, with permission, can we open it up for questions to Captain and to Mike? And I saw some Kamila Nui farmers out here, who may also have some input as to what precautions they may be taking. So those of you who have questions to Captain Jenkins, or to property owner, Phil McCorriston, please put up your hand, and we'll get you a microphone. We have Elizabeth Bradley from Hawaii Kai Nui, who also is a farmer. Nice question. Beverly Ford.
Hi, thanks, Bill, for coming. So I have a question. The 14th fire, which was on the 17th, the very large fire, earlier in the day, a resident had seen some high school students carrying a pallet all the way up to your property. Unfortunately, he didn't stop them. A little bit later, he saw another person that seemed very kind of nervous, carrying a pallet. That person ended up walking away. My husband and I went up to your property, and we counted 13 pallets. Those 13 pallets are still there, so I think they should be removed. Thank you.
Thank you for telling me.
Yeah, I have one more. I want to say that...
Actually, we're being filmed. This is a level filming, so in case you have friends who want to see what happened tonight, they can...
What I'd like to suggest is just that, if we could put signs up... Do you want to push it again? Okay. What I'd like to suggest is, maybe we can place cameras, strategically place cameras in certain locations, and put up a sign saying that we are monitoring this with cameras. You can put up a camera, and you don't have to have somebody patrolling the area all the time. That's a, I know that's a problem, but a camera strategically located, and someone with a, can read a sign saying, "We are monitoring this area," might, might be a good idea.
It already is a good idea.
Okay.
I have another question. Mr. I'm sending that here.
Hi, thank you for supplying this venue here. Will, in the future, will the information come out that the suspect, was he a resident, or was he not from around here? Was he passing through? And if he was just passing through, or if he was a nomad, how do we prevent more firebug nomads from doing their thing?
Before he does his presentation, he's going to give an answer.
Well, actually, it, you know, those things, those are one of the things that's really very hard to really pinpoint, but what I can say about this case is, actually, if you read this article, a lot of it is in this article already. So really, that's all I can release at this time, because it is an ongoing investigation. And, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to work with the Honolulu Fire, with the arson investigator, trying to piece together all the other cases to see if this one particular individual is responsible for the rest of them. So that, we still, it's a still ongoing thing, that's why we can't comment too much on, you know, what's going on now. So as information comes out, or anything that we can release, of course, we'll be releasing it, because I know it's a concern to everyone, and for everyone's safety, so we want to make sure that you guys have that information, but as it stands right now, you know, what, pretty much what's in here is what we're going to release anyway. Thank you, thank you for that.
Other questions to Captain Jenkins, or to Bill McCorriston? Bill, are you still going to be here for a while? Hey, okay, before you leave, I have one question. Is there, or is there not going to be a cemetery? When?
[inaudible]
It's, okay, it's coming. It's like the rail, it'll be built, just hold, just don't hold your breath, just hold on.
Thank you, and again, thanks again for providing this venue for all of us. I had a question. Is the suspect has been released, is that correct? Okay.
My question is, why?
Why is the suspect released? Or are we having a problem with, let's get right to the point, no, you know, no political correctness here. We're talking about an area here that could wind up burning down, so there's no political correctness with this. Are we having a problem with homeless people? And I'm not saying it's the homeless people that's doing this, I'm saying there's the potential for that. We've come across a lot more fires lately, and we've noticed a migration of people. Now, is there any connection between the two?
So that's one of the things that we're going to be exploring. So we've made contact with the property owner, and we're going to take a contingent of officers and go and look... of officers and go and look in that area because I think for the Honolulu Fire has, they showed us pictures in the past about, um, there's an old Kaiser Development. There's an old concrete batching plant back there. And there's a, like, a little tunnel system back there. So, we've asked the Honolulu Fire because they've identified it, they took pictures. But when we looked at the pictures, we couldn't see any signs of people living back there because there's telltale signs if there's people actually habitating in an area. There's a lot of rubbish, but we didn't see any of that back there when they, when they looked. So, we, but we're going to take a look again because we've had reports in the past of homeless people going back there. So, we're going to take a contingent of officer, and that's why with, uh, with Bill McCorristan, with his permission, going to take us back there, kind of tour the property to see where, if there is homeless people back there, we can see, you know, where, where they might, where they might be.
And if they are back there, is it legal to be there?
It's private property, so it would be up to the landowner to... So, we'll, we'll, we'll work with him and see what we can do with those things.
To supplement that, we are very fortunate tonight to have the director of the Hawaii Kai Homeless Task Force, who has looked into this and has a couple of words to say. Mike Goodman.
Well, it'd be more than a couple of words, but we'll keep it short. The risk of fire amongst illegal homeless encampments is very rarely arson. The risk is there, but the risk is usually of accidental fires. When you're talking about an arsonist, you're talking about an entirely different animal. Um, there's no statistical correlation between homeless people and arsonists and, and someone who's homeless being more likely to be an arsonist. Um, the crimes that are correlated, because I don't want to be politically correct about this. There are higher crime rates associated with homeless encampments. And those usually involve petty crimes, petty thefts, fights breaking out, things like that. Um, you're talking about a population that is, particularly with the chronic homeless, largely mentally ill or substance addicted. And that's not usually what the profile is of most arsonists. It's usually a separate pathology. But, again, that's statistically true, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's true in this case.
It's not like the one in my office. The office, my, one of the radio stations that I use every morning is coin-operated. So, I just put a quarter in every 15 minutes and don't have to do any of this stuff. Uh, I thought it would be advantageous, uh, since we have a lot of stakeholders here, to find out a little bit more from an expert on what these fires are and potentially what they can do. And so, with that, we want to welcome, uh, Pablo Akira Beimler to come up and say a few words. I'll bring you the microphone.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. And, um, thank you, Representative Ward, and to all the co-sponsors tonight, as well as, um, for everyone on the panel, um, sharing your expertise to... This is a critical issue. And so, it really shows when everyone from the community comes out and is here to really hammer it out and talk about this, um, this issue. So, a little background on where I come from. I'm, uh, I work for a nonprofit called Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization. And we are actually based on the Big Island in Waimea. But we work statewide and with, uh, some Western Pacific partners as well. And our organization originally formed, uh, back in 2000, just focusing kind of on the North Kona, South Kohala region on the Big Island, if you're familiar with that area. It's pretty dry, huge fires that happened there. And it, our organization was born to basically address the need for prevention, wildfire prevention, wildfire, uh, pre-fire management, and also some post-fire rehabilitation. So, some members from, uh, DLNR Division of Forestry and Wildlife and Hawaii County Fire and a few others got together to form an organization, a nonprofit, that could actually help pull federal funding for projects outside of just fighting the fires. And so, our organization has grown to work statewide. So, now we work on each of the islands. And our main focus, again, is on kind of the prevention side. And we, we really serve this unique role of filling in, uh, to basically be this arm for a lot of the firefighting agencies across the state. And also, um, so, so we basically go out to communities, we go out to, um, uh, we go out to schools and we talk to kids about wildfire prevention and, um, also wildfire readiness. And we also do a lot of vegetative management projects with communities and provide funding opportunities for, for those. And that's something I'll share about in a little bit. But I do want to also mention that we do have, uh, we have actually a technical advisory panel that's part of our governing body in our organization. And so, we actually do have a couple of members, including Captain Jenkins and, um, Dietra Myers-Trimbley over there in the green shirt, the greenest shirt around. Uh, she's with DLNR Division of Forestry and Wildlife. So, also another great resource, someone to talk to about wildfire issues on this island and actually across the state. So, um, just, just something to think about, too, when, um, we're talking about wildfire. So, in terms of what we're seeing right now with wildfires, we're basically facing a really big uptick in wildfires all across the state. And it's really correlated with a few things. So, one is population. And when you look at, oh, and actually, I'll, um, if you don't mind, I'm going to pass out some things for you so you can refer to them during the presentation. Actually, yeah, if I can have a couple of hands. So, I'll also be passing around this form, too. It's, um, a sign-in sheet if you're interested in joining our e-newsletter or even just wanting to be a part of some of the projects that we're doing or hopefully going to be doing in this area. And so, anyway, so going back to the fire issue, we've been seeing fires, um, happening all across the state, uh, both on west side, east side, wet side, dry side. And what that's signifying is that, um, we actually have all these fires that are happening all across, um, you know, off of roadways and anywhere that humans can access. So, it's pretty much a human issue. About 98% of our wildfires are started by people. And, but that's also where the hope is because there is a lot of preventable actions that we can take to reduce wildfire ignitions. There's also another component of it, which is the fuel component or vegetation that can be readily available to burn. So, um, when we, you know, you can just see it as soon as you walk out of here, you know, you have, uh, a large, um, area of dry, um, wildland areas that, um, you know, have overgrown vegetation. And that's, that's common all across the state. We have about 25% of the state now that's covered in invasive, non-native, um, grasses and shrublands. So, what we're seeing is now this introduced wildfire cycle that didn't exist and wasn't really part of the native, uh, native forest ecology. But now, we have this new introduced fire cycle and we're seeing more and more fires that burn further and further up into the native forests. And so, we've lost about 97% of our dryland native forest cover. And what we now have are, um, these invasive grasslands. And so, once, once they burn over, too, you also lose the ability to retain water. So, a lot of the soils also change chemistry. And, uh, when you have heavy rainfall events, which are quite common, right, in Hawaii, then, uh, the soil actually can sweep all the way out into the, uh, through our watersheds and out into the ocean. So, a lot of those kind of brownout sort of days you see are correlated with the upland fires that, uh, have been happening over the years. So, it's really a Maoka to Makai issue. Wildfires, not just thinking about the forests, it's thinking also about our coral reefs as well that are affected. And, uh, there's other impacts as well, of course, to our communities, which is, um, a big reason why everyone's here today. There's also the other things that go into it, like the tax dollars, kind of what was mentioned before about just the, um, the amount of time and effort that goes into fighting fires. But it's actually statistically shown all across the nation that if you focus a lot of your efforts on prevention and pre-suppression, then, uh, it ends up being more cost-effective than just straight fire suppression all the time. So, that's where we all kind of have a shared responsibility in this wildfire solution. And that's, uh, a lot of what I'm going to share about the rest of, um, my few minutes. Um, so, everyone has a Ready, Set, Go guide, hopefully by now. And then, there's also a wildfire lookout flyer. If there's not enough, I have a few more here. Basically, oh, you're in this gigantic box. So, the Ready, Set, Go program is actually part of the, uh, a nationwide effort put on by the International Association of Fire Chiefs. And it's a program that we have turned to be more Hawaii-specific thanks to some funds from the U.S. Forest Service. And we adapted it to be more Hawaii-specific so that it's something that you can really use as a resource, as a homeowner or as a resident. And to be, uh, to basically just go through the whole manual with your whole family and really dive into it and see how, um, you might be able to improve your wildfire readiness. And so, the first part is being ready, which means being prepared far in advance of fire season. And I know we're like right in the thick of it, but there's no better time than now to get started. And so, there's things that you can do with your landscaping. And typically, what we say is you're lightening your landscape. But what you're trying to do is figure out ways that, uh, you wouldn't be able to have a fire run horizontally right up to your home, but also vertically up into the canopies of your trees. So, you can do certain things that are really easy housekeeping measures, like limbing the branches of your trees so that they're at least 10 feet off the ground or, or above brush. And then, you know, also breaking up the continuity of your brush or shrubs that you might have or vegetation so that they don't all just run up in one long train right up to your house. So, there's all these different, uh, recommendations that are in those booklets that I strongly recommend, um, going through. But there's also, in the middle of the book, a, uh, part about the structure itself because a lot of times, uh, when homes burn during wildland fires all across the world, it's because a little ember found a way to ignite something right next to the home or on the home or in, in the home itself. So, that's another thing to really look through, um, you know, envision what you might have around your house and think, okay, that we might have some vent openings that need to be covered. And then, a really critical part is having a plan, an evacuation plan. And even more important than that is practicing the plan. You don't just want to have a stale, dry plan that sits on your fridge. Make sure you practice it at least a couple of times a year, I would say even more if you can. Um, but there's other tips in there. There's actually a few pages in the back that allow you to kind of go through a step-by-step on how to develop an evacuation plan or what to do if a wildfire occurs in your area. And that's more along the lines of the set portion in your Ready, Set, Go guides. So, the set is having situational awareness, but basically just being, paying attention. Pay attention to your surroundings. Always, you know, you have, uh, you know, you can look out your window and basically see, okay, if our brush is starting to turn brown, well, that's an indicator that we could have some more fires. If it's turning green, well, that's a good time to go out and start weed whacking because that means, green means growth, which means more, more fuel for the fire. But also, some other things to think about when a fire happens. And there's step, uh, steps for that as well. And the key thing with the go portion is that you want to leave early if there's a wildfire. And there's a few reasons for that. With, um, when you have an evacuation scenario, the key thing about leaving early is you reduce the amount of traffic that you have, um, once a fire occurs. And so, um, you're basically, uh, providing more access for firefighters if you get to leave early. Um, you also don't become a search and rescue effort if you're left behind and that pulls resources away from firefighters as well. So, that's the Ready, Set, Go program. I really, um, encourage you to go through it with your whole family. And then, another thing that we have going is called, uh, the Firewise Communities Program. And this is where I think, um, you guys really have some good momentum towards becoming a firewise community and, um, all across this stretch. Uh, Firewise Community, if you're not familiar, and I'll just go over it really quickly. But basically, a firewise community is part of the National Fire Protection Association program. And the idea is that you form a small committee or a group of people who are interested in, um, being a part of a fire protection team for your community, almost like a neighborhood watch team. But you work together to get your community more involved in wildfire protection, wildfire, uh, outreach as well. And we, uh, Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization, and with the help of our partners, too, can help you through that whole process for free because we're grant-funded right now to help you go through the Firewise Communities Program. And there's benefits to it because you, once you become certified as a firewise community, then you can get better access to federal funds, uh, for bigger projects if you want to do a big community fuel break. Uh, but also, you can, uh, we're working with insurance companies right now in preliminary stages to offer discounts for, um, residents within firewise communities. So, uh, if that's something you're interested in or think you might be wanting to spearhead, and I know there's actually a couple of people from last night, uh, as well, who are interested in, in this program, uh, please come up to me and I have, um, some information for you. So, um, yeah, that's basically, those are kind of the main programs I want to share with you today. But really, the, the main thing about wildfires is that, um, you know, it takes, it really does take a village. It takes everyone, um, it's a shared responsibility when it comes to fire because we have to think about our own homes as well. Um, and when we all prepare our homes and we can prepare the whole community, even if you had an arsonist running around or if you had accidental ignitions from, say, the homeless, then, um, at least your community is better safely guarded and, and more aware of the firing situation. So, thank you very much for allowing me to share today. Thank you again. And, and I guess I'll hand off the mic to...
Yeah, thank you, Pablo. And once again, for all of you who have those booklets, Pablo, we appreciate, uh, your, your, your knowledge and your manao on this. Uh, you know, now that you're preparing for hurricanes, here's another thing, prepare for the fires. But here's a real good start with that. Uh, one thing that I mentioned earlier tonight, we got a lot of points that we want to cover, is I was so cranked up when I found out what happened to our canoe team from Honolulu Bay. A lifetime member of, of the other club. I, I love the Huenohe people and I know you all do. And they've, uh, they've weathered a storm, they've, they've put up with a lot of vandalism and, uh, just plain interruption of their, over 500 members that come out there every day to practice. So, uh, from the Huenohe Canoe Club, please welcome Carol Jackson. Uh, Carol, where are you?
Hi, thank you. Uh, actually, I'm going to call up our head coach because she has the, the latest update on what's going on and a little bit more information because she's down there every single day. So, Denise Darval Chang.
Hi, good evening. Um, the latest update I got was about a week and a half ago. And, um, Detective Correa had shared that they had arrested what they believed to be the suspect vandalizing a city bus. And, um, that he was in jail and that he was going to be arraigned. And that was the last I heard. So, since that, um, last conversation, we have not had any vandalism. So, maybe that is the guy? I don't know. But he, um, was a homeless, um, person, so they suspect, that had been seen in the area. So, that's what we know. And, um, you know, and, you know, HPD's asked us to share with our membership to be more vigilant with people that, you know, might not belong at the Halau area and then kindly ask them to leave and then call HPD right away so that they don't feel like it's a place they can, um, hang out.
Denise, somebody asked me to ask you this, uh, to make sure that we understood the severity of this. What makes this crime so bad is that it's been, I believe, classified as a felony. In other words, the, the damage that was done to your equipment exceeded $300, which makes it a felony. Have you been, uh, informed about that?
I thought it was higher than that. Like, I thought it had to be over $2,500, so...
I think that makes it a... I think that makes it a mother-of-all-bombs felony. But I think a felony, prosecutable felony, is anything over 300, I think. Is that right?
I think we bumped it up to 700.
Oh, 700.
Yeah. But in other words, that was done. It was not, you guys weren't crying wolf. There was a tremendous amount of damage and frustration that I'm sure was going on out there at the Halau.
Yeah, when it happened, it happened Mother's Day evening is when the first incident happened. So we arrived at practice Monday morning. We fortunately, we go out at 5:15 a.m. We happened to take a canoe that was not slashed. And then I got to work, and then the crew that goes out at 7:00 had called and said that, you know, I don't know, 14 canoes had been, the cords cut. And on an outrigger, there's an inside tie, and then there's the outside where the ama is connected to the yakos, the float, the outrigger itself. So the first incident, only the insides were cut. And then the second incident, there were, not only, but eight canoes were slashed, and that was it. There was a break, a one-day break. Then the next, the third day, only the insides were cut again. And then the last consecutive day, the third day, the insides and the outsides were all slashed. And that was like, I want to say, 64 re-rigs. And, yeah, so a lot of time. And that's, you know, the rope, the cord, we outrigger canoe club came by, dropped off a nice note and some cord, and then a lot of other clubs, you know, emailing saying, hey, if you need anything, let us know. But we did spend over $800 on rigging cord.
Two questions on the slashing. Was it slashing like really clean, like razor-sharp, or was it like some of the scissors that we have?
No, no, no. It's, the rope is, yeah, the cord is so tight, the way we rig it, that it was a pocket knife that's very sharp can easily cut through it.
Second question. I understand you have some new security cameras outside? Or is that still proprietary, or still being worked on?
Yeah, still being worked on.
Okay.
We have a neighbor that lives across the way at the apartment, and then she's been watching.
So how many days no vandalism? How long has it been?
About two weeks.
Two weeks, but you get 64 canoes that have been hacked?
No, 64 ties.
64 ties.
16, I think the last one was 16 or 17 canoes.
How many total canoes are there, actually?
Maybe about 22, 20, yeah.
So the majority of them got hit.
Yeah.
Wow. Questions to Hueno.
Yeah, I got a question.
The men, he's never short for a question. Remember, you guys are as equally able to ask questions. We don't want to give monopoly now.
I have a question. A question that, if we find out who this person was that cut those ropes, can we have them provide community service by rewrapping them? Don't let him sit back on there.
Did everybody hear that? If we find the person who did this, and their commitment...
Get him on the desk. And make him learn how to rope that.
Major Konishiro, can we do vigilante reparations here? I don't know if that's... You know, community service used to be part of the punishing system.
It's a sharp enough knife to stick somebody. You've got to remember that. It's a sharp knife.
I think we all agree with you, sir. It's only that government has got so far away from common sense restitution. Some people who are robbed and killed don't even get reparations for that.
Drag you out there and make you rope it.
Okay, I'll leave this question to be answered by Hueno.
Actually, that's what I would like to have done, is for that person, obviously, they like to do things with their hands.
Absolutely.
And have our big boys stand over them, him, and teach him how to tie. And maybe it'll become a passion of his, and he can retie our boats at the beginning of every season.
You won't do it again.
Because, yeah, we did have a crew of, you know, about 20, for three consecutive days, take off work and whatnot. So when you count in the amount of dollars lost from their jobs that they came down to, get it rigged before the little 10- and 12-year-olds come down, because it's kind of a violent act for them to see and be fearful of, like, wow, somebody's cutting our cords and stuff. It's not really...
They're on there all day. It takes one day.
No, I'm, if I find that guy, I will be there standing over him. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Anybody else with questions directed at Hueno? One more, Denise.
Do you have any information on the motive? Why did this guy do this?
Say it again, Denise. You've got to, it's going to be recorded. Well, I don't know. I'm on the microphone.
Yeah, I wondered if you have any information, either from your own reporting or from the police, about what the motive was? Why did this guy do this?
The only thing I can think of is the messages that he has left on the bulletin board.
I think the flyer the first day said, deathflowerwordpress.com. And then on the third day, the 8.5 by 11 on the bulletin board that he left said, Kona Street Militia. And then the Kani'ohi canoe clubs that were same, similar situation, they're writing on their yakos, the wooden part that is attached to the float, said, deathflower.com. And one was death, ours was death star, and theirs was deathflowerwordpress.com. So kind of a real dark kind of person, I would guess, if those are the types of messages. And it was all uppercase, all cap print.
If you've got listeners on screen who's from Reno, I don't know what you're doing.
And, you know, I hear a lot of things, and then it was like, that's the same person, the suspect that got arrested was the same one that we, he took down one of our championship banners and was graffitiing it. And he did get caught. The police were called. I was called to say if we wanted to press charges. And this was like back in December. And I said, no, you know, just give him a couple slaps and tell him whatever. But then he mouthed off to the cops, because I didn't want to go to court and spend a day out of work to go to court and do all that stuff. So then he mouthed off to the police officer, so they did arrest him. And so I think that's kind of the same suspect, is what I've heard. And then I heard the city guys yelled at him, so that might be why he did it, but I don't know.
I'm sorry, political correct. What happened? Very politically correct. You've got to stop that. That gentleman should have been back there roping that canoe. He should have been in there. That's public service.
Yeah, I got to tell you, though, as good as that sounds, my friend, as somebody who ties canoes, it's not easy. And I wouldn't want some banana that's cutting my canoes up to be tying them. I'd like to see him painting graffiti or doing something else, but certainly not tying canoes.
I'm sorry.
More in the back?
I'm sorry, Mike. I got a question. Those sound like blogs. What was it, again?
Deathflower. Deathflowerpress. Death is not a word. Death is a word. Death is a word.
Death, D-E-A-T-H. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Major Gerald Konishiro, I'm going to give you back the microphone, because I know that a lot of this stuff that you guys do, you can't tell us, otherwise you'd have to kill us, but there's ongoing investigations, right?
Okay, just real briefly. Gerald Konishiro, commander foot of the East Honolulu District, and right there is Brent Cagal, he's the captain, same area. So we cover from the areas from Makapu, Lookout, all the way to Punahou. So that's our geographical area responsibility. And so for these instances, we have, for like the arson, you know, for these criminal property damage cases, you know, when we get reports of these things, you know, we look at it, we look to see how we can do some kind of prevention, or at least try to catch this guy. So we try to do that. And with the arsonists, again, you know, like, we were able to do that. With this person with the canoes, we weren't able to do that, but, you know, we were able to just get some information from somebody that was sleeping at the pavilion. So, you know, we, so we think that that might be the same guy, but not, we're not able to link that person with the crime. So that's one of those things where, you know, we didn't have quite enough, but we had a suspicion, but still not quite enough. So that's one of those things for us as the department, you know, just, we're going to, we're going to take a look at all the past cases and see if there's anything else.
Officer, I want to say it's not your fault. You abide our rules by the laws, and I have a great deal of respect for you, gentlemen. A great deal of respect, and for that gentleman right there, for what you do, for the community.
Oh, yes.
You abide, you work by the rules, and we all have to live by them. Those rules need to be adjusted, so that you can do your job and serve the community you serve.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. But just to, you know, kind of tie everything together with the fire, with the wildland fire, with HPD, you know, we do work together. And then, you know, also too, on that, the program that you guys have, you know, we have a program with Neighborhood Security Watch. What we could do, we could probably implement something like that along with you guys, because, you know, there's a specific purpose. And if it's, if 90% of it is human, you know, human cause, then, you know, we, on the Neighborhood Security Watch side, we could get involved and help start a program along with, along with the firewatch kind of program. And we can start doing, we can, we can work it from that way. And because we do have a contingent of a Neighborhood Security Watch in the area, but we can expand it, you know, we would like to expand it more, because as we expand more, more people get involved, you guys, you guys become eyes and ears for us, and as well as even for the canoe clubs, you know, with more people looking for each other, it makes our jobs easier, because then you guys become our eyes and ears. Because, you know, obviously, we cannot be everywhere at once, you know, and we have a large geographical area, so that's why we want community support, we want community involvement by calling us when things happen, you know, when they happen. And, you know, we really want to, we really want to get involved in that aspect. So, you know, we have a team, a community policing team that's willing to come out, meet with the different groups. You guys can start one if you guys don't have one. You know, they'll be glad to do that, because that's what they do. And of course, you know, we want to work with all the partners here, you know, to get, to make sure that, you know, we want to, we have just as much of a stake as you are too, because a lot of our personnel live in the, live in the area, you know. So, you know, we do have a personal stake as well, not only as an occupation, but as a personal stake as well. So we want to, we want to just put it out to you guys, if you guys are interested in having that happen, you know, we can, we can set something up. Or, you know, there's other, there's other community events that we can do to help, you know, just make everything, just make this place a safer place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Major. Gene, Rep. Ward has some community testimonials, and he knows who they are, so rather than have me introduce them, he'll introduce them.
Thank you, Mike. Rather than reinvent the wheel, some of you in some of your communities have had some difficulties, and you have solved them. Is anybody here from Mariners Ridge? Remember the thefts of what was going on with the cars? Cameron, what, what happened in the process? You want to give a testimony on that? What did you guys do? Because this is a segue to what I brought out in the beginning. You guys got on Nextdoor.com.
Yes, and everyone notified everyone that something happened. There was a little thing called Nextdoor, and the community of Mariners Ridge was very responsive as soon as something happened, as soon as there was a break-in that night, an email went out, and the community was aware of that happening.
And from there, HPD and others were brought onto the scene, 1:30, 2:30 in the morning, and they got the guy. Once they got this young man, all the cessation. Are you also from Mariners Ridge? Yes, madam? We want to hear, because, look, crime has come and crime has gone from the community, and there's some things that we know that we've already done that we need to share among each others. And also after this, I'm going to call on Kokokai. Yes, madam?
I had my car stolen from Mariners Ridge in my driveway. So I got on Nextdoor.com the next day. The police were notified, of course, at first, and they were very, very helpful, and got on Nextdoor.com. I probably had over 72 replies to my blog on Nextdoor.com. And luckily, the car was recovered in four days, thanks to HPD. But everybody in the neighborhood now looks out for suspicious cars. And they see something, they're taking pictures, they're taking videos, and they let everybody in the neighborhood know. Not only our neighborhood, but Haione, Kamilioiki, Portlock, Mariners Cove, everybody can get on this and see what's happening in the neighborhood.
Thank you for that endorsement. And we, by the way, have no dog in this race, there's no financial interest in that. It's what the captain is, the major's been talking about, Neighborhood Watch. Well, this is the new version that's online, Nextdoor.com, and it spreads so quickly, because there are so many, on Mariners Ridge, I think there's 450 people. It's huge. In this valley, Haione Valley, there's 772. But the biggest group is Kalama Valley, which is, Marco, how many? 500, almost 600 people. The point is, the major says early, as he said earlier, the eyes and the ears of the people are really an extension of his duties and his force and his ability to do his job. So Neighborhood.com makes a whole lot of sense, and you don't pay anything, you don't do anything, you just log on and say, here's what I've seen, here are the photos that I've taken. Yes, madam?
Okay, I had a question for the homeless expert here.
Oh, Mike Goodman, okay. Wait, 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 until I want to, I want to wrap up this part of the thing with Nextdoor.com. Is anyone here from the Kokokai Triangle? Portlock went through a hole, here, oh, you are also. Okay, let her on, and Mike, where are you? Here you are.
Okay, I just wondered if there, it seems to me like there are a lot more homeless out here in Hawaii Kai than there ever were before. And what can we do about that? What, what can be done? Because they're here, there, and everywhere.
Absolutely nothing. Now, the only thing that we can do, and we are doing it, is that we're working on a statewide solution to create legal transitional dwellings in industrial areas like Sand Island, and that's got to be done. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of leadership from the governor's office on it, so we're going to try and take that on. The governor's philosophy is to focus only on permanent housing. There's nothing wrong with there being more permanent housing for homeless people. There's nothing wrong with that. But the reality is, is that you have to have a solution for what to do right now. And he's got no idea of what to do right now, no plan of what to do right now, except to go into illegal homeless camps with outreach workers and say, excuse me, Mr. Schizophrenic, would you like to come into a shelter? No? Okay, we'll develop a relationship with you over the next year, and we'll try and coax you into a shelter, try and coax you into a program. And in the meantime, you stay here in Kaka'ako, you stay here camping on Kamehameha School's property, and while we, or on Diamond Head, for instance, which was the most recent thing in the news, where Scott Morishigi, the governor's homeless czar, was talking about the coconut wireless. I don't know if you remember reading about that in the Star News? How, well, even though a lot of these people, we couldn't convince them to accept our offers of housing, we know that the coconut wireless will kind of get it out there, and, and so they'll, they'll come in from the coal. Well, you know, you're talking about people that are mentally ill, that are substance-addicted, that aren't ready for sobriety. That's not a plan. And so that's something that Gene Ward is working on, it's something that I'm working on with him.
I have a question.
Yes. Yes. Okay.
Another question I have is, how many, and I'm going to say the homeless, don't get me wrong.
Right.
They're going to be very difficult. How many of the homeless that are in Hawaii are out of state, from out of state? By that, I mean whether it be the mainland or any other place. How many are we trying to take care of that are not really residents of Hawaii? And are we trying to do something about that if they are coming to Hawaii State? I've heard that there are other cities in New England and other parts will send their people here during the winter. One-way ticket, give them a one-way ticket, put them up, give them 100 crocs and send them to Hawaii. Not only Hawaii, the floor, and the other places that have a $10. And California is due to a certain extent. So what I'm trying to ask you is, how many of the homeless in the state of Hawaii is from Hawaii and not from out of state? And there are a lot from out of state. What are we doing about that? Are we sending them back? Are we just absorbing them and saying, let's take care of them? And that gets very naive and that's very politically correct.
It's, there's a problem. And that is, about 10% is the answer to your question, roughly about 10% are from the mainland. It's not a problem that's unique to Hawaii. I know that we're getting off point, so I'll have to answer this very quickly and hand the mic out. But it's not just a problem faced by Hawaii, it's a problem faced by other warm climates such as South Florida, it's a problem faced by big cities like Los Angeles, where homeless are sent to those big cities which have greater service capacity, social service capacity. Unfortunately, you run into constitutional issues, because you can't have income requirements dictate where people can live. So even though somebody may send someone here with a one-way ticket, you can't... So even though somebody may send someone here with a one-way ticket, you can't send that person back, because they don't meet some kind of income threshold. However, what you can do is, if they commit crimes, you can enforce existing laws, which we're not doing enough of, and that gets into the other thing we want to do. Right.
We are nearing the end of our program. It's now, where do we go? What have we learned? And, oh, you have a question?
No, I've got something to say a little bit.
Go ahead.
I'm hoping the mic can pick me up. My name's Robin Vaughn Jr. So...
The TV personality who said he saved his father's life when he had a stroke.
The problem that I see is, there's a lot of things that are going wrong with our environment, our area, all these things are going to be a problem. And we don't seem to have any accountability held for what we see that we disagree with. And with respect to the flyers, I'll give you a good example. I, I'm with a nonprofit called 808 Cleanup, so we go out and we clean up the beaches and stuff. We also watch out for fires, because fires aren't allowed in Hawaii, open fires and something like that, you know, against the law, I believe, right? So when, when I encounter somebody that's in the process of starting a fire, they haven't started it yet, I'm not going to call the cops. But I'm not going to call the cops when they've already started it too, because they don't do anything. It's just the way it is. We, as, for whatever reason, and I'm not pointing a finger at HPD, there's all kinds of major, way worse stuff than a couple kids starting a fire at the beach. But today, and tonight, because I'm going to go back there to go take care of this, there was a bunch of kids carrying pallets out to the beach at Ka'eevi Beach Park, which is a really common thing for us to go head-to-head with kids. And I don't even bother calling HPD anymore, because there's, there's nothing that happens. I stand there, and they show, and there's nothing, they don't lock them up in handcuffs and take them off to jail. They're, they're having a fire, you know? They smack them on the wrist, they say some stuff, and they make them put it out and leave. But we, as a, as a community, need to do something. We need to start making an effort to try to physically do something, other than just come and talk. Gene Ward's a great example of coming and talking. He fires all of us up. It seems that every time you say something's going wrong, it is front and center in the news, pretty quick. And I appreciate that. We, we need to do stuff. So rather than... (noise) Rather than call the cops, I'm going to go back there tonight with my group and confront them, and make them do what we do the next day, which is pick up all the nails and all the trash and all their shit that they leave. Because we can't rely on the police force to do it. They're, they're in another mode of doing things that are more important than dealing with fires, or gates at, at Portlock, or, you know, whatever we come up with. I, I just wanted to say, we need to do more as people, I think, than point the finger at the cops.
Yeah, I hate to interrupt, but I have to interrupt. We're, we've broke the fun meter, we've had all the fun we can have so far. Obviously, we'll get together again. I want to make sure that we thank everybody, the stakeholders that came and helped us tonight, from the Honolulu Fire Department, Captain David Jenkins, thank you, Cap, for being here. From HPD, not only Captain Brent Kagawa from District 7, but of course, Major Gerald Konishiro, thanks, Major, for showing up tonight. And of course, lovely getting the input about wildfires by Pablo Beimler. Pablo, thank you for being here. And, and we wouldn't be remiss saying, Councilman Trevor Ogawa is here, if you want to come up and say hello to him. Of course, Rep. Ward, and don't forget the people that put the rubber to the road, Marco Valera and Elaine Tsai from Rep. Ward's office, wave your hand over there.